We call the January 18th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board to order. Patty, would you call the role, please?
Chair, J.C. Infell.
Present.
Vice Chair, Rudy Davis.
Present.
Board Member Angela Berry.
Present.
Board Member Hart McIntyre.
Present.
City Manager Kyle Reeffler.
Present.
City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
And Linda Fisher for Pinellas.
Brenda is sick, as you called.
Yes.
Well, we can start off with greeting everybody for showing up. I know this is probably one of the greatest meetings on your agenda for the year. Might be your first meeting for the agenda of the year. So we can start off with the review of the proposed comprehensive. I'm sure everybody read it from cover to cover. Very interesting reading. And you can review the proposed plan amendment based on the evaluation of the report to be presented by Linda Fisher, AICP.
Okay, well, thank you.
You may proceed, Linda.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you all for having me here today. My technology work properly. I wanted to tell you a little bit about why I'm here. My agency is Forward Pinellas. We are a countywide agency, so we work with all 24 cities and towns in Pinellas County, as well as the county government. We have what we call a countywide plan, which coordinates land use. All local government comprehensive plans and land development codes need to be consistent with the countywide plan. And we also help with technical planning assistance for local governments, which is why I'm here today. So I am here to help you update your comprehensive plan. So as Planning and Zoning Board members, you're probably well-versed in this, but for general background, the purpose of the comprehensive plan is to provide a policy basis for the regulations that the city adopts and other decisions that it makes. From the state's perspective, the purpose of the comprehensive planning process is to help regulate the growth of communities, to make sure that a city's population isn't growing so fast that it's outstripping their ability to provide roads, schools, and so forth. That's not really a problem we have in Pinellas County, since we're virtually built out. We're only growing by a small percentage each year from redevelopment, even though sometimes it seems like more. But all our local governments still have to update their comprehensive plans every seven years to make sure that the policies are still current and to stay up to date with any changes that are made to state. And then you also have to update your maps and data and the references to any agencies or plans that change over time. There are 10 elements that you have to address in your plan, and that means you either have to include them or demonstrate that they don't need to be included. In your city's case, the only one you don't need to include is the public school facilities element. You're exempt from that requirement because you don't have any public schools. You have to provide data on any population growth you anticipate. In this case, you're not anticipating a lot of growth, and that's common. That's common for most communities in Pinellas County, and particularly on the beaches where things are pretty stable. You need to provide information about housing in your community, water and sewer facilities, recreational resources, and so forth, to show that you have enough of those facilities to meet the needs of your population. There are four maps that you have to include at a minimum. They show that you've planned for enough land use and transportation to accommodate any population growth and that you've factored in the coastal high-hazard area and the potential for flooding. So that's the basic package of information that you have to provide with every update. As I mentioned, you have to account for any new laws that have been passed. There are two that you need to address this time. The big one is called the Parallel Flood Act from 2015, and it requires you to address the effect of potential flooding, stormwater runoff, potential impacts of sea level rise, and so forth. And you have to include redevelopment principles, strategies, and engineering solutions to address those issues. This was a big deal when it was passed statewide, because these were not questions that a lot of communities had addressed up to that point. But as a barrier island community, you're already doing this. You have to, and you've been doing it for many years. So it's just a matter of having the comprehensive plan spell out the strategies and engineering solutions that you have in your land development code already. Another new law that was passed last year is called the Private Property Rights Act, and that is a statement of private property rights that has to be included in your comprehensive plan, just basically stating things like the government can't take your land and can only impose reasonable regulation on what you do with your land. From a regulatory standpoint, this law didn't change anything, because those things were already in law. But it calls more attention to those rights as a reminder in your comprehensive plan. And then lastly, there are just a few sort of housekeeping requirements that need to be updated every seven years. You need to include what's called a water supply work plan, showing that you have enough water capacity to meet your existing and future population. You all get your water from Pinellas County, so this isn't a requirement that's really burdensome. You just need to report that the county has the capacity that they have and the very tiny percentage of it that you all will use. You have to update what's called your schedule of capital improvements, which lists the major planned expenditures that your community has. So if you're updating your stormwater drainage system or enhancing a roadway, anything that's over $100,000 in any given year, they want you to list that. And then, as I mentioned, you just need to update any terminology or references that are outdated in the plan. So as your technical consultant, I've prepared a draft update to your comprehensive plan that you have in your packets. It does all the things I just talked about. There's nothing subjective in that draft. It just continues the policies you've had in the past and updates anything that's required by law. So now, as a Planning and Zoning Board, it's your turn to review it. You can make recommendations for anything you want to add or anything you want to say differently, anything you want to take out, unless it's required by law. When you are satisfied with the draft, you'll hold a public hearing to make a recommendation that the city council approve the draft. Then it'll be the city council's turn. Once they're satisfied with the draft, they'll hold their first public hearing. Then it will get transmitted to the state agency charged with reviewing the plan. And that agency is called the Department of Economic Opportunity, or DEO. They'll provide what's called an objections, recommendations, and comments report, or ORP. And it also goes to a few other agencies for review. One of them is my agency, Forward Pinellas, wearing a different hat. Another of my colleagues will review the plan to make sure that it's consistent with the countywide plan. And spoiler alert, it is. It'll also go to other state and regional agencies, like the Florida Department of Transportation, typically Regional Planning Council, and then the three communities that are adjacent to yours. Virtually none of those other entities will provide any comments, but we do have to give them that opportunity. So that process takes 60 days. And if there are any objections, recommendations, or comments, they're usually pretty minor, so we'll just need to address those in the draft. And then, at that point, the city council holds a second public hearing to officially adopt the updated comprehensive plan. And that is basically the comprehensive plan update process. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I'd like to add, thank you, as the city attorney, just to help you to understand the real, the value and the importance of your comprehensive plan. We're all familiar with the notion of your constitution and the constitution from which statutes flow and then rulemaking in terms of orders' priority. Your comprehensive plan is like your constitution for land development in your community. In fact, there are corresponding statutes, portions of which were cited in Forward Pinellas's presentation, that say any development that is in conflict with the comprehensive plan is basically void ab initio. And there are judicial opinions saying development in violation of the comprehensive plan is unlawful development and must be torn down. So if your comprehensive plan has certain restrictions, any property owner has the ability to bring a consistency challenge. Hey, city, when our comprehensive plan says you're not allowed to build something that is of X-intensity on a lot, and the city just said, "Well, we really like Elon Musk, and we're going to allow them to build whatever they want," a resident or a property owner could bring a challenge and say, "Even though cities approved it, they want it, and a board approved it, this is not in lockstep with the comp plan." And my law firm has litigated cases based on comprehensive plan consistency. And I just wish to impart to you that while a lot of this may be presented or perceived to you to be like, "This is housekeeping, some of this we just have to do," like the property rights designation. But there is a real value, and I want to make sure you understand the charge with which you're being given here today in terms of what, you know, looking at your comprehensive plan. It is one of the few times where you're not just making a, "This is the rule," but you're laying out, "This is the vision. This is the direction we want to go in." And as you put things in a comprehensive plan, there are supposed to be land development regulations adopted within a year of that comprehensive plan, if there are amendments, to reflect that. So if you say, "Well, we want to see more bike paths," that's visioning. But if you had something like, "No bike path shall be more narrow than 10 feet to accommodate multimodal transportation, because that's the direction we want to go," then you're going to start seeing land development regs sort of flow in that way. And so I'm not suggesting you get over ambitious and start throwing everything you've ever wanted to see. It's not regulating, it's visioning. But I want you to understand, it's vision with a purpose. It's not just, "Let's develop a mission statement." It has real legal value in this regard. So thank you for that, I just wanted to add.
Can this, I'm new to this, so, question about how we do things and what our rules, if I pick that up and find it. Will this plan, can this plan even get down to addressing things like architectural or aesthetic control?
To a degree, it can. You're not going to, in your comp plan, have only blue buildings or things like that, or everything needs to maintain a coastal appearance or, you know, consistent, given, you know, what I've seen. I wouldn't say I've seen this precise provision, but something along the lines of, given this community's history as a fishing community and fishing village, it is desirable, not required, desirable, that the aesthetic continue to incorporate that thing. And then you'll look at things down the road and say, "Are we putting land reg?" When we look at what we're putting in our code on how we build, have we taken into account this comp plan visioning statement that we want to preserve the fishing history aesthetic and not go to this neon-orange or something? I don't know. How that plays out later is a whole nother fight. But you really want to keep those sorts of things a little more broadly. There are some comp plans, candidly, that have in there, you know, I think it's, um, there's a community that, where they have height restrictions in there, for example, or nothing over, you know, X amount of feet. That might present a different issue, but some communities get more granular in that.
The more typical language is to say, "Shall remain consistent with the neighborhood character, the residential character, or the neighborhood and shall remain welcoming to residents and visitors." Those are the two statements usually have. But typically, we don't see, and locally, we don't see detailed architectural restrictions. It's just more general character.
Are we to assume that you reviewed this document?
I have not reviewed that document in full yet. Where it is in the process, that's not in, I've been provided it, I've skimmed it to make sure we are where we say we are in the process, which is nascent. There are several tiers. I will certainly be reviewing it before I advise the commission on it in full. And my, having worked with Forward Pinellas, understanding how involved this process is, my review will be more to say, are we running, are we encountering an issue that may not have been anticipated? For example, are we regulating our duration and frequency of short-term rentals and changing something there in a way that might jeopardize some other legal protection we have? I'll be looking at things like that. But no, at this point, I have not reviewed this in full. I've reviewed it for, it is, well, we'd say, reviewed as to form. It is, in fact, a comp plan amendment prepared for review by this body and going through that process.
Okay, our next step is to review this.
Yes, sir.
Situation.
Yes, sir.
Everybody.
Yes, sir.
I sort of feel like Congress. They drop this thing on us and say, "Okay, the foot's going to have a meeting." Now, it's going to take several meetings. I know, Patty, we went through this once before, and how many meetings we spent with that other, if you ask what we did last year.
Yeah, I don't recall, that was a long ago, but, you know, I can check.
Yeah. So our next step is for it to fall back on us with your recommendations and our recommendations. Is that the deal?
Well, whether you folks feel that you need multiple meetings or today's, you know, you've had the time to prepare in advance, I've looked at this. I don't see anything that I'm, as a board member, have concern or causes me pause. And you recommend, you can, you can today recommend favorably to the commission that, as just from the board's perspective, yes, this meets. And let me be clear about what, you know, you wear different hats in your Planning and Zoning Board, and under the city's ordinances, under 78-31, it says that the city recognizes the need for coordination of planning activities as outlined in the Planning Act and wishes to coordinate with the Planning Council. And under A, it says that the Planning Board will serve as the local planning agency for the purpose of a comprehensive land use plan, because under statute, you have to have a local planning agency. So you're not just the Planning and Zoning Board as it ordinarily exists in this community. You are the Planning and Zoning Board serving as the land planning agency who by statute reviews and approves, recommends consistency with comprehensive plan. To answer your question, sir, you could decide today, "I've looked at it," or "I have faith in the staff report," or whatever it is, and say, "We're good." If you want to get granular and say, "We're going to go line by line, and we got through three pages today, and we'll get through another three pages the next time," or whatever, that's ultimately at your discretion, just understanding that there are some timetables that we have to go on. I don't know where we are relative to the seven years and how much runway we need, because that's more administrative, but...
I'd like to know that.
Okay.
What's the date you have for the last time it was approved?
Pardon?
What's the date you have for the last time? I can go to D E O.
We are, the date is actually February of this year. We are running a little bit behind schedule, and I take responsibility for that. But it's a soft deadline. If you're not amending your future land use map, there's not a lot of consequence for being late. That's not uncommon at all. But I do apologize that I have made you run a little bit long.
This document presently exists with the city? Is that what you're assuming?
You do have an adopted comprehensive plan, and it was last updated in, I believe, 2016.
Okay, this is already in here, in, in...
A functioning operative comprehensive plan is this?
Oh, put it in that fancy term. It's useful, it's there, it's here.
It's binding, it's legally effective.
Now, I've been going through it myself, and I hope my board did. And I'd like to ask any of my board people that went through it, did they see anything that was peculiar to them as a board? Go ahead, Rudy.
Well, let me ask, is this essentially the same, this draft, the same comprehensive plan that's on record with your recommended updates and corrections?
Yes.
Okay.
If you were able to print it out in color, any additions are in blue, and any proposed deletions are in red.
In red, okay. So essentially, the only thing we really need to look at closely is anything in blue and red?
Unless you want to make a policy change. But I, this draft does not reflect any subjective policy shifts for the city. I just updated...
Match the vein there.
What she's, so what she's, I don't mean to use the word this way, I just can't, for lack of a better term, hedging on is, what she's looking to do is saying, she's coming at it from a compliance standard. There are certain things you just need to address. You need to update your census numbers, you need to have the flood plan, you need to have the property rights statement. And today, the draft before you checks those boxes. But ultimately, every community enjoys home rule and the ability to regulate itself, at least for now. And so, to the extent Tallahassee continues to smile upon us and allow us to self-govern, you have the ability to make policy. So if, for instance, she's not going to address the desire for the operation of autonomous vehicles on your roadways or something like that, I'm just picking something out of there. And if you folks said, "Well, actually, that's a really important policy for us, and I was wondering, where's the autonomous vehicle stuff in here? Where's, where's that stuff?" Then that would be a situation where you're not going to see a recommendation, because that's policy, that's visioning, that's a community self-governing. So if there's, whether it's that or it's something about your beaches or anything else, your, whatever visioning exists there as policy objectives. If you folks say, "I read our policy objectives, but I feel like it's missing X." That doesn't have to do with just strict statutory compliance or regulatory compliance. That's going to come from you folks, or the commission, or a resident who may comment or observe the meeting process and say, "Why is nobody talking about this?"
Okay. Patty, do you have anything to add to this?
No.
For us, okay. Any other board members who'd like in our time to go over this?
Well, I do think that we should go quickly through the pages and look for the blue and reds and note those as a group, that we see this, we have no objection to it. It could be a pretty fast process, but I do think we at least need to take that step.
Why don't you not, at least, it's, I agree with you.
Fundamentally, I've got a question about this. Once this is, we've gone through this, and it gets approved, makes its way all the way through council, what's the obligation of the council, the city, the management of it, to abide by this in a, is it strict form? Is it simply a kind of a soft guide? We're going to look at this, we're going to review it, but we can justify doing things that are bending this to some extent?
I will, as the legal counsel, answer that question. To the extent there are clear requirements that are not policy objectives, but clear, strict regulations, especially those regulations that then find themselves codified in the land development regulations, which is the next tier of it, you don't get to play fast and loose with that. Reasonable minds can disagree on what any planning document, visioning document says. And so you will find instances where they say, if somebody reads this and says, "I'm not sure that the construction of this skate park is consistent with our flood mitigation. You're adding all this cement, and we said this and this and this." And I find, as a board member, when I passed this, this was exactly the kind of thing I was worried about. And staff can look at those and say, "I see those policy objectives." We also have policy objectives that say we're going to provide for recreation for our guests and visitors. And then you're going to have those fights. So I will tell you that nothing in this world is absolute. However, to the extent it's a codified restriction that is memorialized in your land development regulation, we don't get to just ignore those. Things issued in violation of your code are void. You don't have, in order to go deviate from the code, you need a variance. But when you're talking about the policy objective side, we want to preserve the historical nature. We want to preserve the small-town feel, continue to provide community gathering spaces. These are overarching visioning statements, and how somebody makes that narrative align with whatever they're proposing or doing is a different question.
So the more specific that this becomes, the less latitude there is to play loose with it?
Potentially, yes, with the understanding that your comp plan is not to be so specific, generally, because it is...
I'm just trying to understand.
It is, no, they're all good questions. I just, I will tell you that you will start to get pushback when you say like, "Well, I want our comp plan to say that there will never be a house within 10 feet of the setback." Well, that's not really what a comp plan is for. That's what your land development regs are for. And even then, you say, "And a variance looks like this," because, hey, it's a pie-shaped lot.
There's another committee can do that.
Exactly.
Just remember. Okay, so we're going to have to have a couple meetings. What's our absolute deadline?
Well, again, there's no absolute deadline.
Good, that's all I wanted to hear.
Tallahassee's going to want to see that you're advancing the ball, that you're not neglectful of your...
We are advancing.
And they're going to say, "We had a meeting, we found consistent with planning. We wanted to have a second review, but we fully wall our deadline, maybe February 15th. We anticipate having a draft due by March 2 or something like that." They want to make sure that you're doing that.
Why would you pick February 15th?
Do you have to balance that?
That's my anniversary. No, it's my wedding anniversary.
We're both hopeful romantics, I suppose.
You've been recent to it. I would like, feeling of the board, that we don't rush into this, that we have another meeting within two weeks. Give us a chance to read it and make our notes. Are you, you mean longer or shorter?
Personally, I've gone through it. I think if we jump into it, start doing the business, we get through what we can.
Today?
Yeah, if we don't, I mean, what's the point of having a meeting if we're not going to sit here and start tackling some of the issues? And Rudy's suggestion is good. Let's start with the basics, go through, see if the recommended changes or something that anybody takes exception with. If you get endorsement, then we want the specific critical issues.
Okay, Hart?
Is there any objection on the left here? Hello? We're going to essentially do our thing here and then go to council. Would it not be wise to have council come in here one day and say, "We looked at this. We're going to recommend this," and then the board has some feedback on that? Or is that beyond their scope?
I would say, from a practical standpoint, that's really, really difficult, just logistically speaking, because that body would also have to have its notice meeting. Now, we're conferring with two bodies at the same time in a meeting and coordinating those schedules. From an administrative standpoint, that's challenging to say nothing of the way the process is presumed. Your first-tier review, you send it up, they'll get everything else over the finish line, and ultimately, your advisory, they're binding. So you're here to, gets to say, "Hey, we vetted this for you." It's a little bit of a shortcut. We're another set of eyes who did a first-tier review for you. Here's what we think you guys, if you're going to do the job right, here's what you should look at. And then they'll do with that what they wish. So I don't know that there's a lot of value in them coming back to you and saying, "We're okay with it," because that'll just candidly add administrative delay.
Okay, understood.
And how much of an obligation do we have to get public input, resident input, to this?
We're doing it. We're having an open meeting. It was noticed. If the residents, if the residents wish to be...
It's propagated, screen-prepared.
It's been published, the residents wish to, there is a fundamental, especially a soapbox moment. In our current socio-political climate, there's this notion that unless we sent out a text message, a postcard, and invited everybody to fill out a survey, that we didn't open for public comment. We are open for public comment right this moment. And this is going to go at least twice, if not more, before the commission. And the public's free to participate then. And the public can send in emails and notes and/or just ask to meet with Kyle or any one of the commissioners between now and the termination of this process. But there's not a requirement that we go door-to-door or openly solicit everybody to come very specific. Hey, what are your thoughts on bikes, and what are your thoughts on beach arding? And that's not the process, it's not practical.
It's controlled by the constitution.
Yeah, that's just what due process requires.
And the codification of what exists, so there can't be any inventions. I know that.
So can I, Kyle and Patty, as staff, what's your comfort level? Would we just go through this and look at the red and blue, comment, make sure we don't have any objection? Do you think that's a good process, or do you want to see more of this?
I think that's a good process to start with. I think it'll maybe facilitate, some issues might come up as you're going through it. And then it might do some other ideas. I've already reviewed mainly all the data that she put together and compared it to what I had, and we've made some adjustments based on, like, some of the maps, the, which lots are no longer vacant. Some information I had from our rental registrations, just for the rental information. So we're trying to make it as accurate as possible.
So that's already been added?
Yes.
Because you're, okay.
Well, it's, I'm satisfied with us hanging around for a while. Everybody else doesn't have to. I'm going to go over it, and go from there.
And will we go, we reach one of the blue and red out loud?
I think so.
And prove an objection or that kind of thing?
I think we can do that.
By record, Kyle is city manager, you're no longer entering.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
This says, this says...
Okay, I will fix that.
Explain it. Nice job, Kyle. Please? I said, "Nice job, Kyle."
Any comments from the public?
From the public, I like the fact that you're dignified in moving forward. I think you should take advantage of the consultants' time, the outside resources. They've done a lot of preliminary work. We have a comprehensive plan. We've had one for 30-something years, if not longer. I think you have personal thoughts that probably will come up later. But I think in the spirit of time and timelines, you're doing the right thing by moving forward with red, blue approvals, and then get into the meat and potatoes if you have other visions that you'd like to see the city address.
Okay.
That's my thought.
Okay.
You think that's a good plan as well?
It's good to me.
Great. All in favor with our board? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So care.
Okay.
So we're going from there.
Okay, so you want to start with the goals, objectives, and policies? Okay, this is the adopted portion, the goals, objectives, and policies. And a few of the maps are the adopted comprehensive plan. We'll talk later about the data and analysis, including the statistics. Those are an unadopted appendix. And there are a couple other maps that aren't adopted. This is, this is the meat of the comprehensive planning process.
Do we have that copy here?
You have all that in your copy.
What, yours is, yours are Cliff Notes.
I'm sorry? I don't understand.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Do you already part of page numbers?
Yes, I am. So the first edit is on the bottom of page three. This is in your future land use element, and that's just a simple, I updated the way. It is policy 1.1.6. So this is the goals, objectives, and policies documented, so it's...
It's under the goals and objectives. So it's further back.
Page, future land. String one. Page three, future land.
So you got to go back.
This way?
No, the other way.
Somewhere there.
No.
Am I stealing my page? I think you got to go back.
You got to keep the draft. Keep the draft.
I think my documents are just in a different order than yours.
Okay.
So it's page three. It says future land use element at the top. And the last policy on that page, 1.1.6. All I did was change the way the maps are cited, and that's consistent throughout the document.
Correct.
Okay. So your future land use categories are the same as they've always been, with one exception on page seven. You did not have an impervious surface ratio standard for the institutional category. So I added one for you. And this follows, I mentioned earlier that your comprehensive plan has to be consistent with the countywide plan. So I just used the countywide standard. Now, you can further restrict any of these standards in your land development regulations. So if you only want an ISR of .55 in your zoning categories, this doesn't conflict with that.
Can I ask a question on this? Sure. Impervious surface means something that will not pass water.
Correct.
Are paper driveways considered impervious or non-impervious?
They're impervious, so they do not pass water. Count against.
Do, have we done any study? Because I brought this up in previous review, code review. There are some that, some lots where they pretty much put pavers through the entire property and would exceed .85.
So the code was adjusted for residential low that has the same ratio requirement. And since that code was adjusted, we've been taking, intaking the permits for anything that will change the impervious surface ratio, and that's checked.
And anybody that's already beyond .85 as grandfather did, would you like to worry about it?
I believe, I'd have to check the ordinance. I don't think if it said anything, if it would go back, if it was a reference to people who are already in violation or not. Sometimes, unlike, I know with the shed ordinance, it said, if you currently have a shed, it said that you were going to get violations. So...
That'll be interesting.
So this is just for the institutional future land use categories? So properties like this one that would be with the public?
This is the only one.
Okay. So have you covered everything in pavers in the city?
Yeah, and then I wasn't sure if you were going with, you know, there are, at one point, there was pervious concrete, pervious asphalt in the approved papers. But then I think the science over time has proven that they're pervious to a certain point, and then they've stopped being pervious. So with SWF MUD, they've changed sort of their regulations on what they qualify at this point.
And really, this is our, part of our process is to review whether we don't have people in compliance or not in compliance. If that is, is what standard is that, is county or state?
It's a countywide standard, so you're not legally able to exceed that standard anyway. It was just missing, so I just added it for completion.
We could reduce it, though.
You could, yeah.
Points five oh or something if we wanted.
You could. It makes more sense to do that in your zoning districts, though, where you have more finely-grained control. But you can reduce it in here if you want. But ultimately, it's your zoning districts that'll control what the maximum impervious surface ratio is.
So I guess where I'm having a problem is trying to decide whether we should be involved in this conversation or setting a standard here or less than. Is that what really, we're really here to do? Or should that be passed on to council and other bodies that will decide painting and zoning? Code enforcement or something like that, or council itself? And you see where I'm going here, or?
I see where you're going. I mean, ultimately, you folks have the ability to give input on any element that you wish.
I see.
What, it's my understanding, and forgive me if I misunderstood you, to the extent you're discussing the ISR, impervious surface ratio, right now, you're exclusively talking about it in the institutional zoning district. While ISR will come up again and again later, right now, the page you're looking at has to do with just basically the land this building is built on, and that's it. And so unless you have particular concerns about this complex and its impervious surface ratio being more restricted further or less, I would suggest that you can continue to move along. ISR will come back later, but again, as, forgive me, last name again?
Fisher.
Ms. Fisher, as indicated, even if you don't address it here and you just say, "Generally speaking, we wish to see, we wish to see the impervious surface ratio limited to continue to control stormwater, mitigate flooding, and address climate change," or something like that, your LDRs, your land development regulations, is really where the rubber's going to be devoted on that. No point to...
Continue your question.
Okay. So another edit on page seven was just more housekeeping under policy 1.1.7. There was a table without explanation, so I just added a sentence to explain what it is.
I see nothing.
Where is the difference between single-family and multifamily? Where does that fall in on this?
You won't see that in your future land use categories. I don't believe, your future land use categories typically just speak in dwelling units per acre. So generally, it's about seven and a half or below is typically single-family. And then above that, you can start getting into townhomes. But I don't believe we spell out, we say low-density residential manner.
So if you have a duplex or a Y, is that controlled by this?
That is not controlled by the comprehensive plan. That's something you would regulate through your zoning district.
Next page.
I just made a grammatical change on page eight in policy 1.1.8.
Nine.
So this is another amendment to be consistent with the countywide plan. And this just states that you're not going to put nursing homes, hospitals, convalescent homes in the coastal high hazard area or mobile home parks. In this case, the coastal high hazard area is your entire city.
You're already allowed any.
So that's, it was already not allowed per the countywide plan, and this is just codifying it.
Correct.
Do we want to, if we have issues on this page, do we want to do that? We want to get through the red and blue first, and then come back?
No.
The specific issue?
No.
I had a question about policy 1.2.2 on page nine. What is it that's being contemplated here in the redevelopment of Beach Marina? Why does that need to grasp?
That is language that you have already in the plan. So that would be a policy issue that you would need to talk about as a city. If you...
What does it mean when it says, "What redevelopment"? I mean, that just stood out to me because it means potentially that thing's up for whatever people decide can be done with it, as opposed to just leaving it as a marina.
That's the way I read it.
I don't have a vote there, I'm just curious.
That's the way I read it as well.
So it sounds like it's got to stay a marina.
Does it say it's got to stay as a marina? It says it shall complement the existing. But is it saying it has to stay as a marina?
It's not saying that.
Can this, can this committee say, "We think it's something that brings value and long-term vision, it should stay that way"?
Redevelopment of the marina could mean either further expansion...
As long as it's marina.
Or it could mean redeveloped to another use.
So what if, what if the vision here was, we have a discussion and we go, "We think the best thing to do is make sure this stays as a marina, because there are some people who would obviously take advantage of it, and they moved to the area because of it." I don't have any skin in the game on that, but it just stood out to me.
Inasmuch as you phrased it as a hypothetical, if this body said that that was what you would, what you would like to see some language like that to that effect, what would happen is in the report given to the commission, so they've reviewed the comprehensive plan with Ford Penelis's insights, they found it consistent, and they added the following recommendations. Policy 1.1.2, marina redevelopment. Consider restricting to only marina construction. Because again, you're advisory and you're providing recommendations for the commission on, "Here's her notes, here's the stuff we added." And so it would look like that. It wouldn't necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily result in amended language, because ultimately, the commission is the policymaker, but that's what would happen. On this or anything else, we're going to have your list of recommendations that come out of this.
So at the end, you should just have your list of what you want to add as a recommendation, and we'll, I wonder, is it up at the end?
Yeah.
So I'm confused. So are you saying you want to change that so that it can't be anything than a marina?
All I can do is bring my, you know, whatever I come to the table with. I moved in from Fort Lauderdale about three years ago, and I saw things that happened there that dramatically changed what was going on down there, and not to the better. And so that's, you know, when I moved here and I saw the area, I go, "Oh, this is beautiful." And laying all the cards on the table, I got involved in this because, far as I'm concerned, we got to keep it as close to this as we possibly can. And I know that some people come into this, maybe they don't want to keep a boat behind the house, or they can't. There's an opportunity. And I think that brings value, in the great scheme of things, I think that brings value to our community. We don't, I'd hate for that to become a restaurant. And we've got restaurants on either side. We can get to them without any problem at all, but that's just a personal feeling. So everything I look at here is, you know, what's my perspective on? I would hate to see happen here what happened in Fort Lauderdale. When I lived down on Los Olas on the Isles, and at one time, it was a beautiful little area, but just no point, couldn't handle it. It just got too crowded, too many McMansions, and...
I know exactly where you're coming from. And there's several committees that get involved before it would even reach that area.
Well, I hope so, but it seems like we're...
The Department of Transportation, the permit department, I can see several. No.
But there are, I could come up with examples where I go, "Yeah, we've got something being built that really doesn't fit in." But it's specific to this beach marina. What I was asking, is it possible that we could come in and say, "You know what? We want that to stay a marina in perpetuity"?
You could, I think you could do that.
For legal clarification, we can say that as a vision, but you can't...
This document wouldn't fetter. The way you would usually do it is say it is the vision that we should. And ultimately, you can't bind every commission in perpetuity that way.
Yeah.
But you, nor would, generally speaking, to use an analogy, you, this, the commission is the parents of a community. Rarely will you, as parents, bind yourself in a way to say, "Under no circumstances will we ever move out of this house." You say, "We will do everything we can to stay in this house."
Not unless you put it in there, I have a bull trust.
But, you know, and so, you know, you do everything you can, and then, hey, yeah, you put it in irrevocable trust, but then suddenly, hey, we fell on hard times, we got to offload this asset. It's all we got.
It was just a question, I'm not trying to make it a...
No, I was just hearing.
It's a good question, and I think it's a good, it's a good example of how rest of the dialogue goes.
Our goal is, if it's just a vision, our vision is, we'd like to see this marina stay here as part of what this community is all about. And then if the controls, the codes, or whatever come after that, well, they're saying this is what they want. How do we bring that into code?
I don't think there's perpetuity.
Bad word, is it?
There's, yeah, it wasn't. But if we dwell on that with all the existing boards and exist, I've been in accounting in a city for 23 years, and every time anybody mentioned anything, every committee in the world came up and expressed their same opinion.
So I'll give you a little outside perspective to see.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. And I think if we sit and dwell on each little thing like this until we get further down the road, we're going to be here until midnight.
Yeah, I think the process, we were talking about what's the process. We're going to go through this, and he's going to maintain his notes.
Yes.
And then after this, we're going to, each person's going to get an opportunity to bring up something they want to add.
We'll have another session where we can formulate our...
I'm just trying to understand the general rules and the brain that does this.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is far. That's difficult.
Okay.
So can you give points?
Well, there's not open for public discussion, is it?
Ultimately, this is a meeting of the body. Public comment is allowed at some portion. The gentleman has had an opportunity to comment. It's really up to you as to how, we're operating a little more fast and loose here than your structured, ordinary meeting might work. Ultimately, when you open it to public comment, is that your discretion? If you said, "We're going to go through all of these, and then we'll take public comment, or you're going to take them one-on-one based on the level of attendance?" Is your discretion, as chair, sir?
I would rather stick with the pattern that we're using and use comment at the end.
Okay.
All right.
So continue, please.
Okay, on page 10 of the future land use element, there are a number of changes that were just updating the name of my agency and the name of the countywide plan and countywide plan map. And that continues on page 11.
Um, is that a typo?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And there is a typo on objective 2.1, which I will face. Thank you.
That's my typo, lady.
Okay, so that is the future land use element. The next edits are on page 13. And at the top of the page, it's number eight under policy 1.1.1. And that is just updating, again, the responsible agency for the multimodal impact fee ordinance, which is something you adopted last time with the comprehensive plan. And that's just basically a transportation impact fee. And then I made another update to the name of my agency on the bottom of page 13. So these are not substantive.
14.
Okay, page 14, again, there's, you'll see Ford Penelis in blue over and over because we changed our name in 2016. Policy 1.2.3 was just grammatical changes and reference to a map that wasn't there before.
It's all one day.
Right, and that policy 1.2.3 was very long, so I split it into two policies. So I've renumbered the ones under it. And policy 1.2.6. And I just made that more general to refer to Gulf Boulevard and Cosway Boulevard. I crossed out motorized and non-motorized transportation needs. And I moved the non-motorized, this is just reorganization, I moved the non-motorized pedestrian and bicycle transportation to their own objectives and policies. Objective 1.3 says the city shall seek opportunities to increase mobility for pedestrians and bicyclists. And that was really just rephrased from policy 1.3.1.
When you talk bicyclists, are you limiting that to strictly a non-motorized, non, whether it's electric or gas, strictly a true bicycle, or is it mixed?
I didn't make that distinction. I didn't make that distinction, so in this context, it could be either.
We're going to come back on it.
We need to...
Yeah.
You got it in there.
Okay, and...
It's a longer description.
Yeah, that's the same part of that regard, organization. Page 17, you need to adopt what's called a level of service standard for water, sewer, garbage, and stormwater. Your standards have traditionally followed whatever Penellas County adopted. So your standards have traditionally followed Penellas County, so I've just updated the standards here to match Penellas County. And it's consistent with your new water supply work plan, which you will see on the next page, that's the table in blue. You didn't have this before, and this isn't something you absolutely have to have. I believe before, it just had a policy that said, "We defer to the county." I have a contact at Swift Mud who gives me this spreadsheet so I can make it look really nice, so I just did this. This basically says the same thing as, "We're going to follow the county," but it just says it in numbers. If you don't like this, you don't have to have it, but...
But back on 17, if we, potable water dropped from 120 to 79?
Right, and I based that on the water supply work plan.
I don't understand that. We're all using more water than rest water, are they putting a restriction on this here?
No, again, I just followed the numbers, but if you're not comfortable with that, it can remain 120, and I can take that table out, again, you don't have to have this.
We are forever bolding to be part of Penellas water supply.
Correct.
How do we, how do we, as a, and as a vision, look at what's going on out in Scottsdale right now? Scottsdale has said, "We're shutting off water to communities outside of Scottsdale." Do we need to be preemptive, Florida's going to go through the same thing, do we need to be preemptive somewhere, or saying our vision is, "We'll always be dependent on it?" Because there's houses out there now that cannot get fresh water on the outskirts of Scottsdale.
Right, the reason that Scottsdale's able to do that is because there are tongues and subdivisions on the outskirts. In Penellas County, we are all intertwined, if you look at it...
So it's not anything that has to be looked ahead five or 45 years?
No, if you look at a map of the unincorporated Penellas County, it is Swiss cheese all over the entire peninsula, so even if they wanted to shut off water to other communities, I don't believe it would be physically possible. But if you want to add that statement, you can. But there are already policies about how you receive your water from Penellas County and you will continue to do so in the future.
But these numbers are accurate, so you're confident this number she gave you, or Swift Mud gave you, is an accurate number, okay.
Yeah.
But you don't have to adopt that standard, again, I based it on the spreadsheet, but if you'd rather, for comfort level, stay with 120, you can do that.
And when we make that decision, at the end, will we do the recommendations, or right now?
You can make that decision right now, I'll make a note of it.
I'm not comfortable with going down to 79.
Okay.
Was always been on 20.
Don't give it us if you don't have to.
That's huge, yes.
The purpose of this isn't to bind you to only providing that much water, it's just to show that you've planned for that much, that you've planned to have sufficient water for your population. But I'm going to go ahead and revert to the language that you had, that Policy 1.1.4, and I'm going to go ahead and strike that table.
Everybody good with that? I'm good.
Okay.
So what about this sanitary sewer, is that...
Pull that one up.
Right. But if you take this whole, are you taking the whole thing away?
Just this table, this is just potable water.
Oh, this is just the potable.
So this doesn't include sanitary sewer.
That's potable.
Right, the sanitary sewer standard is just a numeric standard that the county has in their comp plan.
Okay.
So there's no statute like this.
Okay.
Okay, making error.
Page 19, I just spelled out Southwest Florida Water Management District, I don't like to see acronyms, policies, but that is a stylistic choice, and if you would prefer the acronym, then that is perfectly fine. Page 21 was just a, let's see, Policy 1.1.7 at the top of the page.
Back to old records, I'm going to tend to not be indigenous.
Oh, okay, I apologize, I skipped page 20. Skip page 20, Policy 1.1.6, and that was just a grammatical change.
I think that's already been covered by the city council.
1.1.6?
Yeah.
It doesn't say anything different substantively than it does now, I just changed the grammar a little bit, so, I didn't like the way it was worded. Again, I did make some stylistic changes, and that was also the case for Policy 1.1.7. It just said manatees in the area of the city, and I just said near Vellar Beach.
Why do they limit them to less than four feet? I'm just trying to find, they did a water depth restriction for...
That was already...
Is this even in?
Yeah, that was already in there, and I just left it.
So we could, conceivably, we could remove that from 1.1.7.
There is...
What they're, what they're saying here is, anything deeper than four foot, we're not going to restrict any speed limit, but we've got a slow speed minimum weight zone that goes out 300 feet into Clearwater Harbor from my seawall, and I know that there's a 15-foot depth around the perimeter that is deeper than that, plus it's 670 feet as you get out there, and that area from those buoys to my seawall is exactly where all the manatees come through. And we need to keep that restriction based on distance, not water depth, because they hunt the coastline, they don't go by depth of water.
This may have been old guidance that's just been in your plan for a long time, so I will update that language.
None of that, sure, yeah. So I'm just going to make my recommendation for 1.1. Do you need to teach humanity degrees?
Yeah. It's not only, it covers not only the manatees, but acronyms.
Yes.
Everything else, swimmers that come through that area, so...
Okay, I will update that language.
I'll see. Put that here, guess one more.
I got it.
Okay. 22?
Well, just a couple other, again, grammatical edits on 21. Page 22, Policy 1.3.1, I updated the language about the out-of-county category five hurricane standard evacuation of 16 hours follows the state statute. We don't meet that in Penellas County, but it is a statutory requirement that you include that in there.
That's codified, we move on to the next one.
Okay, and Policy 1.3.4, this is part of those parallel flood act requirements that I mentioned in my presentation, where you have to talk about disaster preparedness, flooding, preparedness, and one of the requirements is for emergency management, so I just added a couple policies about that here. These are typical policies that you see in plans around Penellas County, just states that the city will participate in annual hurricane preparedness seminars and shall coordinate between county and state emergency response agencies. I want to say maybe I got that language somewhere else from your code, and I just moved it, possibly not.
No, I don't have any problem with that, I think.
For the parallel flood act requirements, I tried to just stick to things that your city already does, or that beach communities generally already do in Penellas County. Page 23, again, I just spelled out coastal high hazard area.
Spelled it out.
Policy 1.4.5, I crossed out because that is covered in other policies elsewhere. And then I just changed some of the map citations to just update the numbering.
Down here, five.
Good with that page?
No problem there.
Okay, so now we get into the meat of the parallel flood act requirements on page City shall reduce the exposure to human life and public and private property to natural disasters through preparedness planning and implementation of hazard mitigation measures. That's verbatim from the statute. So I said that for the policies, you'll designate an emergency management coordinator, you recognize that the entire community is located in the coastal high hazard area and the hundred-year flood plain, and that you will enforce all appropriate federal, state, and local coastal construction control line requirements, you already do that. Policy 1.8.3, again, talks again about the hospitals, nursing homes, convalescent homes not being allowed in the coastal high hazard area. Objective 1.9 says that through its land development code, the city shall implement development or redevelopment principles, strategies, and engineering solutions, again, that's verbatim from the statute. So the policies are, land that is subject to flooding conditions and deemed by the city to be topographically unsuitable shall not be platted for residential occupancy. You wouldn't have done that anyway if it were unsuitable for residential development, and you're not really doing any new plating these days anyway, so again, that's just reflects what's already been done.
Questions at any time.
Well, we should add to the end, do you want us, I have a question about 1.9.3.
Okay.
And it's really, it just brought to mind a question, this is talking about flood damage, but is it possible for us in this somewhere to address undergrounding of utilities?
Oh, boy. There's a can of worms.
Well, I mean, you look at what happens in a hurricane, and if you've got above ground, we're at greater risk than if we put it underground. But I don't know if we have any control over that because of public utility.
We do, this is an ongoing situation with the city, it's a study that's never quit, it's still going on.
So what that typically looks like in a comprehensive plan, again, this body and this plan is not going to commit the city to the capital outlay, et cetera, but what you would look like, look at, provided it's consistent with the element that we're in, is if undergrounding is consistent with the element of the comp plan that you're in, is the city will continue to improve and harden its infrastructure relative to hurricanes and other weather events, including such measures as undergrounding. And that shows a policy objective, this is the direction we'd like to go, but it doesn't bind you to capital outlay, and that's, again, this is a visioning document, so if we say as a community, that's a direction, that's a vision I'd really like, we as a body would really like to see the city commission consider, that's a perfectly appropriate thing to put in the comp plan, but more, and you don't, you folks don't have to finesse the language, you could just say, "We'd like to see a policy objective on, that accounts for exploring undergrounding." That would be an appropriate thing to do.
Yeah, I just, oh, you're in here, there seems something to the topic.
Continue, please.
Let's make it a note. I skipped over Policy 1.9.2, just says that proposed new development shall be designed to minimize flood damage and be reasonably safe from flooding. And you have to do that anyway, again, under the Florida Building Code and the National Flood Insurance Program. 1.9.4, for new development in flood zones AH and AO, adequate drainage shall be provided to reduce exposure to flood hazards, and adequate drainage paths shall be provided to guide floodwaters around and away from proposed structures.
What point were you on?
1.9.4, and I believe I took that from your land development regulations.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have any AH or AOs.
Okay.
But I guess it just has to be there anyways.
That may have been older language, let me, let me check that and make sure that language is current. But again, this, these policies are intended to codify what you're already doing. Objective 1.10, the city shall encourage the use of best practices, development and redevelopment principles, strategies, engineering solutions, you've heard that phrase several times, that's from the statute, that will result in the removal of coastal real property from flood zone designations established by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. That doesn't require you to do, to knock down houses, but it just says that you will generally follow best practices if there is a FEMA set of repetitive flood policies, and FEMA wanted to come in and explore the idea of purchasing and knocking down those houses, just as the city will generally follow those best practices. Policy 1.10.1, the city shall explore opportunities for federal, state, and local assistance with public acquisition of properties that suffer extensive storm or flood damage, again, that's the same sort of thing. Policy 1.10.2.
Sure.
The city shall consider one or more of the following strategies in those areas which receive major or moderate flood damage, relocation, reduction of permissible density or intensity, or reconstruction in compliance with current building and construction standards, or public acquisition. That's just a standard menu, it says the city shall consider, so it doesn't bind you to those. But generally, if you're having repetitive flood properties and the city wants to explore how to address that, that gives you a menu of what they would do.
Where would you address seawall height?
That's set up by...
But you can have a vision on it and look forward to it because we're going to have rising water.
Well, I'm sure that, I've been hearing that for 20 years, mine is actually going down low. It depends on the winds from the west, and I don't know if we should even, even, in fact, I made that suggestion, but I don't see us as...
Unless you don't want your community to turn into a flood zone permanent.
No, it's not that.
Problem there, living on an island, barrier of island, every community would have to adopt it, if we go up...
Yeah, everybody decides you don't.
Then we end up being an island.
Yeah.
I mean, Vellar Beach, an island.
Typically, in the way they controlled it over there, is they looked at what your mean height was above whatever the new measurement is for water.
I think we should talk about that all day, and we can't, I can't control that, and neither can the support.
If you look ahead to Policy 1.10.4, we talk about erosion control structures.
So that might be where it comes in.
So again, you're laying out the general guidance under comp plan.
That's how we stop the traffic from Clearwater.
Keep aisle from safety?
Yeah, we go right across.
Yeah.
But despite safety, if there's too many people going on the beach.
Yeah.
Come on, folks.
All right, Objective 1.10, city shall identify site development techniques and best practices, reduce losses due to flooding and claims made under flood insurance policies, that's from the statute. Policy 1.10.1, the city shall prohibit the alteration of sand dunes or mangrove stands which would increase potential flood damage, that's pretty standard language.
National Fed flood insurance and all that keeps, you know, that is so screwed up now, we don't, none of us know what's going on. Carry on, please.
1.10.2, the city shall control the alteration of natural flood plains, stream channels, and natural protective barriers that help accommodator channel floodwaters, control filling, grading, dredging, and other development that may increase flood damage, and prevent or regulate the construction of flood barriers which will unnaturally divert floodwaters or which may increase flood hazards in other areas.
That is there, I've seen, it's there.
So this is the state policy saying the city shall control the alteration, right?
Yes, the state statute directs you to, they refer to it generally, again, as those engineering solutions, and then you can more specifically choose what engineering solutions you want to use in the town, but that's a pretty standard set of them, you're not doing a lot of dredging and channeling on the barrier islands these days.
No question.
1.10.3, the city shall encourage retrofitting of existing structures to mitigate potential damages from natural disasters. That's pretty straightforward. 1.10.4, "The city shall continue to coordinate with Pinellas County and the Army Corps of Engineers to evaluate the feasibility of beach renourishment, erosion control structures, or other mitigation to preserve and protect the beachfront from erosion and the potential effects of sea level rise." So you're already...
Control the water.
But you're already coordinating with the Army Corps of Engineers, and you'll continue to do that going forward. 1.10.5, "The city shall consider the findings of the Pinellas County Sea Level Rise and Storm Surge Vulnerability Assessment to help identify and mitigate," there's an extra word in there, extra couple of words, "properties vulnerable to flooding."
Where is that study?
I will get you a copy. They should have given, the county should have distributed it to all the local governments. Have you seen that study?
Yes.
Okay. But I will get you a copy.
Yeah, we'll get a copy. Yeah, we'll have a copy.
I don't know if you've seen that.
Me too.
So, objective 1.11, there's a weird phrasing in the statute that says, it just says something like, "Encourage other, encourage local governments to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program," which is something that the state should be doing, but it's in a place of, a list of things that say what the city should be doing. So I interpreted that as, "The city shall participate and encourage other local governments to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program." You don't have to go out knocking on doors. It's just generally, everybody participates. Everybody...
Yeah.
Everybody participates.
National Flood Insurance Program.
Everybody participates in the community rating system and, do you take part of the local mitigation strategy group that Pinellas County has? So I would say your job is done with that policy.
And not just for city rates, then, is it right? Does tell us?
Yep. Policy 1.11.1 says that you'll continue to be a participant in that program and work to maintain or increase your rating, which you're already doing.
You really don't have a choice, Pete. I mean, it almost makes it sound like this is a choice thing, but we don't have a choice.
You don't have to be in the CRS Community Rating System Program. That gets you a discount.
Yeah.
And you can be as aggressive as you want to be to...
What we want to do?
Yeah.
The state statute encourages your continued participation. 1.11.2 says, "You'll provide information about the National Flood Insurance Program on your website," and I believe you do that already, "flood elevation certificates and things that you're required." And then that's also covered in 1.11.3, that you post your elevation certificates on the city website. Okay, so that's the biggest chunk of new content. And again, it's fairly boilerplate from the state statute, things you're already doing or things that are pretty standard. There was one change in the recreation open space element, and that is on page 30, I added the word "the" to a sentence.
Yeah. Wait a minute.
Your intergovernmental coordination element is just about how you interact with other local, other cities and towns, the county, my countywide agency, the regional, state agencies. And the only changes I made to that were to update Ford Pinellas's name, and then and then I just made some grammatical changes to 2.1.1. Again, I don't like to see acronyms if they're not being used, if they're not needed. Page 33, again, Ford Pinellas. "In addition to coordinating land use and providing technical assistance, we are also the Metropolitan Planning Organization." So wherever, I think that just acknowledges Ford Pinellas in its role as the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and that's for transportation planning.
Just for transportation?
I'm sorry?
Just for transportation?
The Metropolitan Planning Organization, yes. They, that's a strange name, but it's just for transportation planning.
They always say it that way.
Historically, in Pinellas County, you had the Pinellas Planning Council, which governed land use, and the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which governed transportation, and they never talked to each other. But we have merged, so we are now Ford Pinellas, so we coordinate land use and transportation everywhere we possibly can. So at the time your plan was updated, we had just merged, so that's where you see the MPO slash PPC, but we hadn't yet rebranded as Ford Pinellas. So I'm rebranding it in your...
At the end of this, are you open to discussions with you about your organization?
Absolutely.
In particular, what's happened to Clearwater Beach and what it's caused, and the lack of infrastructure they put in place to properly handle the problems they've created for us, traffic-wise, et cetera?
I can talk about that if you'd like. I caution you that I'm not a transportation planner, I'm a land use planner, but I can take notes on anything you want to talk about, and I can take it to my transportation colleagues.
It's land use.
Okay, I can talk about that too. Talking about the beach by design.
It's the state telling them and us that we can only build a one-lane bridge or two-lane bridge, and then allowing the development that far exceeded the capacity of those structures.
Okay.
Sorry.
We can talk about that if you'd like.
Okay, at the end?
Yep.
All right.
Sure.
Or is there a note on that? How it happened?
33.
Paying my frustrations.
So that, all of the page 33 edits are really just grammatical or updating the name of the organization. And then on page 34, the continuation of policy 2.2.12, talks about the Planners Advisory Committee, and I just noted that that is a staff-level organization, so if you'd like, or Kyle, if you'd like to come to Planners Advisory Committee meetings, you're welcome to do so. Normally, we have like planning, planning directors and planning staff at those, but for local governments that don't have planning, anyone else, building official, city manager, anyone else who wants to attend, is always invited.
Thank you.
On page 35, all I did was really move the location of your capital improvements table because I thought it looked better spread out, so I scooted that over so it could take up its own page. And the schedule of capital improvements, just, we talked about that in the presentation, is major expenditures, anything over $100,000 in any given year that is spent on things like infrastructure or improvements that serve the population, we just listed here. Technically, you are supposed to adopt a new one of these every year, but almost no one does, and there are not really any consequences for not doing so. And then page 37 is just deleting that old schedule of capital improvements, and then just slightly rewarding those policies to compensate for that. Page 39 is, those edits are just grammatical. Policy 1.5.1 said, "All development and redevelopment, make sure it does, do not result," and it was just awkward, so I changed it to, "No development or redevelopment results." Page 41 is the private property rights element that you are required to adopt by statute, and this is verbatim from the statute. So there's nothing, not a lot of really wiggle room here. And that is it on the goals, objectives, and policies. The next section is your maps. And the first four maps are part of your adopted plan, and that'll be all spelled out in the ordinance. We do it this way for everybody. So the maps that you are required to adopt are Map 1, your future land use map, Map 2, your transportation corridors map, Map 3, the coastal high hazard area, and Map 4, flood plains. There are a couple of other maps that they want to see you include as part of your data and analysis. Existing land use is what is built on the ground today, regardless of what the future land use category is. Sometimes you can have a commercial category that'll allow either commercial or residential, and this map shows what is actually on the ground today. And it also shows the vacant parcels. This is as classified by the property appraisers office. In talking with Kyle, originally, we had a lot more vacant parcels shown on here because new development had happened and the property appraisers office hadn't caught up yet.
Okay.
So, but we went, Kyle went through and found all those parcels, and I changed them. And then Map 6 is a soils map, and this, if we don't include this, they're not actually going to care. I...
I'm throwing one too.
I always put this in here, but Kyle and I were noting that one of the Finger Islands is labeled beaches-type soil, and we don't know why that is. So, did we say we were going to throw this out, and I just accidentally included it?
We didn't say if I want to throw it out, but...
But yeah, this is completely optional.
I'll get their recommendation.
What does it do for us?
Just shows that when the town was originally, when the future land uses were laid down, that soil was taken into account, and it doesn't really say anything, but the statutes recommend including soils.
Why, it says beaches. I can tell you that Finger referred to, J.C. and I live on, in fact, three of us live on it, and it was built by building a seawall of that design, and then going around and pumping the sand from the bottom into, behind the seawall to build that. So that may be where they got that reference, beaches.
Yeah. And that's done by the National Resources Conservation Service, which is a national organization that, I mean, this data is probably from the 50s.
We need, we don't need to all...
Okay. Do you want me to take it up?
No.
Okay.
Leave it in. You know, they're quite a useful expert.
Okay.
We can tell they're looking at it.
Okay. So the data and analysis, this is another part of your unadopted appendix.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
So, this, I mean, Bella Beach goes past this, Bellisle, doesn't it?
These are your municipal limits.
Okay. Is this that's supposed to be the Marina or?
The purple's Marina.
The Marina is that triangle.
So this is Harrison, that last street. Okay, okay.
All right. So the data and analysis is all new. You don't have to do a strikeout underline of this because it's not an adopted document, but I based it heavily on what you had before. So there's an introduction that just talks about how the city is meeting the statutory requirements. It says that, I'm going to have to update this because when I drafted this, it was still 2022. You have to, you have to cover what are called planning horizons. You need a short-term, five-year planning horizon, and then a long-term planning horizon, and that just shows how far you're looking. So when you're doing your population projections, which we'll get to in a minute, or your housing projections, you have to pick an ending year. And so I picked 2045 because that was the readily available data. So I say that it's a 23-year planning horizon, but since it's now 2023, I'm going to change that to 22, 22-year planning horizon. And that is in the third paragraph.
Okay.
So it's probably easiest to focus on the tables to go through it. So your population projections, the 2020 numbers are based, of course, on the most...
What page are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry, A2. And I forgot, everybody's in a different order than me, so I'll let everybody flip back to the page.
At the very front of your book, A2.
Sorry about that. For me...
I read it, but I didn't know it was on.
Okay.
Yeah. So page A2, Table 1, is your population projections. So it reflects the 2020 census numbers, and then the projections, I took those from, Ford Pinellas, again, is our role as the Metropolitan Planning Organization. We have to do a five-year transportation plan, and as part of that, we have to include population projections. So I just took excerpts from that that apply to your city, and that was both the permanent and the seasonal and tourist projections, and I just plugged them into that table. And it shows that you're only going to grow by about 67 people.
Can we burn that down?
Nobody's population projections...
I think he typed it for mayor.
I definitely did.
Nobody's population projections are ever correct. This is an educated guess in how much you think that the city is going to grow, and generally...
We understand.
Yeah. So this does not bind you to importing 67 people.
We're going to hold you down, 2045. Rudy will be here to ask you about it.
Table 2 is existing land use, and that is based on that existing land use map, and that is just a percentage breakdown, and that does include the updated vacancy process that we've been having.
That's fine. You did a great job on this situation.
Table 3 is, again, just a percentage breakdown of your future land use designations and how much acreage they take up. Table 4 includes those vacant parcels, and if they were all developed today to the maximum that they were allowed, that could result in 16 units theoretically. That's not likely, that scenario is not likely, but hypothetically. On page A4, Table 5, just inventories, your major roadways, and the level of service, which is, that is set on a countywide basis, so that's just how well the roads are functioning. They are at level of service F, so if you wanted to put in a big new apartment complex on Gulf Boulevard, you might get some questions about that, but since you are fairly stable, that's not a thing that you really need to... We're in duly.
Plenty of insurance are there.
On page A5, Table 6, is your housing estimates and projections, and that's just a breakdown, that came from the property appraisers office, how many single-family units you have, how many multifamily. Table 7 is how the property appraisers office...
I have a question.
Okay, sure.
It says that we have a residential group home. Do we still have a residential group home? It's the first paragraph.
That is a good question. Did we talk about that? I thought we did.
Is that the motel?
I'll double-check that. I want to see we looked at that, but I can't recall.
I think it was the ALF, but I thought that she sold that. But you can check it, Linda?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is one.
Was that it?
Was, there's one. Where was it?
I don't remember. Down there, right?
Eighteen?
Can't remember exactly.
Is that Mary Jones?
Yeah, I think so.
Mary Jones?
And I think she sold that.
The house?
She won't...
She's still there.
She sold a house. I'm not sure if it was that or...
Oh, she wasn't using her house.
Is that the, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Don't clarify on that.
All right, I will check on that. Table 7 is how the property appraisers office classifies homes in terms of condition. So as is typical everywhere, virtually all your houses are average or above average. You do have some that are excellent, mansion, mansion superior and superior, and we did identify the mansion and mansion superior. I can't tell you, the address is off the top of my head, but if you'd like that information, I can forward it.
What about a map?
A map of this information? We could do that for you.
Yeah. Just make it red or something.
Sure.
Make it faster.
Okay. Table 8 is what's called housing tenure, and that is, is the resident, does the resident own where they live? Do they rent? Are they a snowbird, or is the property vacant? And for all of these, we had information from the Census Bureau, that American Community Survey is an arm of the Census Bureau, and we just extrapolated that out to 2045 and just assumed that those percentages would remain the same. Again, it's nothing really critical, it's just data. Table 9...
The page seasonal units.
Seasonal unit, it's, the official term is held for occasional, seasonal, or recreational use. Typically, that's snowbirds. If you allow vacation rentals, that would likely fall under that seasonal unit.
Air being the year, short-term.
Ninety-day.
Is it 90-day?
Yeah.
So that's how the census classifies it.
So you came really, that's a very good definition, and it probably should be divided into separate categories, but you could never get that down.
Right, the Census Bureau only puts it in one bucket, seasonal, recreational, or occasional use. Let's see. Table 9 is cost-burden households, and that is anyone that is spending more than 30% of their gross income on housing. That is an issue everywhere, but it's, it's probably better on the beach because you have retirees that own their homes, maybe don't have a mortgage anymore. So I believe you're doing a better percentage wise than the accounting as a whole. But there are some, some cost burden households. And again, we just note them and we project that out to 2045. Page A7 is infrastructure. And that just summarizes where you're getting your water. I've got that 79 gallons per person per day figured there, so I'll go ahead and change that. I'll take that out. But it just, it, there are requirements to talk about where you're going to get your future water supply and how you're developing future water sources.
And that answered one of the things I asked about earlier, is it obligated to now Tampa Bay water? To meet the needs of member governments, which Bella Beach.
Yeah, they are, they are currently legally obligated.
Stretch it.
So you won't be developing your own, your property, you won't be drilling your own wells or putting up a reverse osmosis facility, but the county might do those things or tip the bay water. And so that's just, that's just what this section says.
Defines the cost to do that, the county commissioners or this body?
Tampa Bay Water is the water supplier, so they sell their water wholesale to Pinellas County. So they would be the ones that are developing the resources and figuring out what it costs.
But do they have the ability to set their cost to or are they selling the water to?
They do. I don't know if there are any statutory limitations to that cost.
That's more my question, yes.
Yeah, I can get more information on that. That's not a question I've been asked before. Page A8. Recover sanitary sewer and just says that you're a customer of Pinellas County Utilities and that they're responsible for the facilities and that. Yeah, and it just reiterates that the, the level, adopted level of service is 115 gallons per capita per day, which is the same as the county. Stormwater drainage is just, again, boilerplate language from what you had in there before. You have to meet certain federal state requirements and, and I've just cited, again, that was in there already. So I cited that the chapter of the Florida Administrative Code that you have to defer to. And then your level of service is based on a 25-year, 24-hour storm event. Solid waste, my understanding is that you are, you have a private contract with Waste Management of Pinellas and you have an interlocal agreement with Pinellas County to take the garbage to the refuse-to-energy facility, which is the same as everybody in the county. And the level of service, or excuse me, the, the solid waste demand is based on your population projections times the county's adopted level of service of 1.3 tons of garbage per capita per year. And that's what that table 10 is. Any questions on the infrastructure?
No.
Okay.
These next couple pages are self-explanatory actually.
Okay, great.
Unless somebody's got any specific questions about it.
Okay. And the last page, again, just, there's just one of these sections for each element. So it just sums up what each element is for. So we talked about what the capital improvements element is for, what the private property rents element is for, and then the public school facilities that you're exempt. And that letter of exemption has been on file since 2008.
Are there any further questions we have, Linda? From the board? Well, let me just say, at the end of all of this is when I'd like to discuss what happened on Clearwater Beach. Being former mayor, at the time of this bridge was being built, with Daniel, the public committee that oversaw the discussions and decisions that were made. We had input, we didn't have any final impact. We had recommendations and actually followed ones to look, to public step. We were constantly reminded of the state's objective for the two lanes here and two lanes that were in control and going to Clearwater Beach. That the objective was to control the population and cost of structures on barrier islands. And so the bridges were built and then Clearwater Beach exploded and is still exploding with high cost, high resident, high occupancy structures with almost no limitation. And the only thing we were ever told was, well, Clearwater traded some of their limitations of that property to inland properties where they're restricting growth so that they can add growth to Clearwater Beach. How did that happen? And final question B, is there anything that they violated in their own land use limitations or state land use limitations that we could go back and sue them and have them tear those things down?
That's a big question.
Noted. I, I'm not in a position to provide any. And whether private residents restrict 20 years options, they wish, they may wish to.
We can't dwell on that.
So you're prepared yourself. That's where I'm going.
Okay. So there is a statute that limits investment in infrastructure in the coastal hazard area for the reasons you mentioned, because we're not trying to attract new population to those vulnerable areas. The statutes that deal with coastal hazard area and the countywide plan provisions that deal with coastal hazard area talk about increases over what is allowed today. So what happened is that Clearwater Beach had adopted a lot of density that they hadn't used yet. And that's what you're seeing with that redevelopment. You're seeing that kind of latent density. I agree, it does sound like there is a mismatch between the density and the transportation infrastructure. But the way it was done, that wouldn't be able to be limited by the statutes or the countywide plan. We.
Wait, stop.
Okay.
It was done in a way that would not let county or state law restrict it?
I should say, I should say, based on what you've told me and what I know, I'm, I'm operating from what I believe happened, is that Clearwater had already adopted that density before these, some of these restrictions were adopted into statute. And, and the statute governs density increases over what's allowed today. But they had already allowed quite a bit of density. So they didn't have to adopt new density increases. They had it already.
There were grandfathers.
I will also tell you that, so any further density increases that they wanted to adopt would need to come through Ford Pinellas. And you have a beach representative on our board. And I apologize, I don't know who the new person is. It was Mayor Cookie Kennedy for.
She just, she just had her last meeting in December.
Right. And she just was turning limited out and I apologize, I don't know the name of the new gentleman who was taking over. But you do have a beach representative. Typically, they attend the big C meetings. So you can talk to that person and have them carry your concerns to the Ford Pinellas Board. And I don't think there is likely a legal way to address what's already happened in Clearwater Beach, but to highlight these issues and how we don't want to see it worsen going forward. I think that is a valid thing to convey to your representative.
So even though the state was saying, we're only going to build these roads because we don't want to develop, they are allowed to build it and not have any responsibility for increasing the capacity to get traffic going along that island or that, their portion of that, the barrier island. They have no responsibility to, I mean.
Is this something that should be answered in private?
That capacity.
At this meeting?
Okay. You want me to stop, I'll stop. But what I'm just saying is there was no responsibility for Clearwater to within their own boundaries, if they were exceeding state statutes or mandates or regulations to control it within their own borders.
They should be doing, absolutely should be doing a better job of coordinating develop, land use with transportation. Just what I'm talking about is the, the part of the statute that speaks to development in the coastal high hazard area. Couldn't, couldn't reverse what has happened.
Okay. I suppose you're getting at it from the perspective of all the traffic.
Absolutely.
Now, can we, because I had a note and I didn't hear it. Where do we get an economic benefit out of that? And we're, we're not going to reverse it, but is there any way for us to get an economic benefit for the city?
Hold it. I think we're on another tangent in some ways.
This is way out of hand. Well beyond comprehensive plan consistency. I, I would say to, to Ford Pinellas' point, the board member representing the beaches now is Alan Johnson. He's the mayor for the City of St. Pete Beach. If you have concerns about the planning agency and the advocacy for the beaches, that is best taken to that body. This body's not going to, it, it's beyond your charge and duties, especially in this meeting, to resolve that issue. It doesn't mean that your policy considerations and concerns are not valid or, or deserving of attention. It's just, we're, we're going to end up talking at it, sharing our frustrations and making it more of a venting session, which whilst on some level may be satisfactory, may leave you continue, continue to be disappointed because what came of you saying it to us? And so that would be, that may be the, the better venue for that.
What if your full revision though is to control or mitigate the traffic?
Well, for sure, but at this stage, nobody's talking about a policy proposal. The, the conversation is, this happened, this is a frustration, we can't, we can't put the toothpaste back in the tube. And so if there's a policy consideration, this community wishes to, to add, it certainly can. And I'm not, in no way attempting to neuter this board's ability to do that.
And that would really fall in the comp plan terms, that would fall under intergovernmental coordination. And that would mainly occur through Ford Pinellas. On what the land use.
We'll hit off of that because nothing they're doing on board.
I'm, I'm not sure I agree with that. And I've got to say, wait a minute, let me finish. I let you finish. So please, could I, if, if we're going to spend the time here, volunteer, and the idea, I don't want to whitewash any of this. I don't want to whitewash, it's not an issue of how fast we can get through it, it's how thorough we are with it before we say to the board, we're ready to roll. And so I think it's a critical issue.
With our, totally.
I think it's a critical issue of looking at the vision, because if, if the vision doesn't encompass somehow the fact that we've got all of this traffic flowing into here because they can't handle it on 60 and they begin using this as a thorough way here, we may not be able to reverse what they're doing up there. But we might be able to put something in place that economically makes it a burden for those people to come down here.
No, but I have to allude to the legal advice on where to take it properly. That's, well.
Yes, I do, we've got to decide how to do that.
Let's.
Actually, just explain that.
I will again defer to legal counsel, but my.
I defer to the body.
My.
You, I, we just give advice. You folks do the work, so.
I was going to make a suggestion and then look at you in case I was saying wrong.
Sorry, I, I cut her off. I'm sorry.
My recommendation would be that if you want to express it in your comprehensive plan, you can add a policy under either transportation or intergovernmental coordination or both that speaks specifically to the issues that you have with the traffic coming from Clearwater Beach.
Air change. Who would help us properly were that new?
I can do that. It would be helpful. Would somebody be willing to send me an email talking in as general or lengthy terms as you want about the, the issue? And then I will try to boil it down to policy language.
Sorry, we need to put something together and email them, bring it to the group to approve.
Here's the problem with that. You two can't do anything outside of today.
No, I'm saying separately.
Whether, whether you, you know, if you go home tonight and you mull it over and you write her an email and you go home tonight, I just want to be very, very clear, for sunshine law reasons.
Right.
You folks can't say, hey, let's, let's meet, let's go on a walk over the bridge and then looking at all that traffic in the view, we'll, we'll have our moment of clarity and you and I will work out some joint language. You can't do that. If you wish to do that separately, you may. If, alternatively, if you wish to convey the general principle that you wish reflected in policy, again, you folks don't have to wordsmith today.
Right.
So you could say, we would like to see a policy that calls for, in the most, as generically as possible, this. You know, that calls for cooperation, management and mitigation of traffic flows south from the northward beaches through our limited infrastructure. Something like that, then great. She, she can wordsmith and we can.
Can you say that again?
Yeah, say that again, because that's perfect.
I mean, is that.
Recording.
It is on the audio recording, but is that, I mean, is that.
Sure, you can center that.
Certainly we can. I mean, if, if that's the consensus of the body, I just was throwing out something based on just, just trying to get there. But if that's really, if that, if that sentence or fragment is generally what you wish to address, is that the consensus of the body, that you wish some language to that effect?
So this body can come with that request. Not that we would do it outside of the meeting, but that could be a topic of discussion at this table. Whether it's this meeting or another meeting, it can be done.
It, it has been a, a topic of discussion. What I will tell you, I, I want to be clear about one thing. Because the way you phrased that was like, we could talk about this today or we could talk about it another day. If you're talking about it in the context of another day, the comp plan process is marching along. And so the idea that like, well, let's talk about that in July. Well, the comp plan process will have, have sailed by then. Amending the comprehensive plan is not as simple as amending our land development regulation or some other charter, I mean, not charter, other, some other code provision that it's, we have two reading of an ordinance whenever we want to get to it. Right now, we're, we're, we're looking at the comp plan. If you ever want to do it again, it goes up and down and back to the state, back to us. So now would be the best time or the very, very, very near future. But it sounds like you've had that discussion a little bit today and it sounds like there actually may be some consensus in that regard. So you don't need to, if you don't wish to, you don't need to talk about it at a later date. If you want to say, the, the vision for this meeting, what, what should come from it and perhaps we can do a better job in the future of, of communicating this. But the vision for the meeting today is what you've already done. Go through the blue, go through the red, see if we have any problems. But you can also leave here today with, and here are the five things we'd like see added. And if one of those is management of traffic south from 60 through our limited infrastructure, great, that can be one. And if you want number two to be, we want, we also want to see more recreation to include pickleball courts and ski ball and whatever else, great, that can be number two. Whatever you folks want to make your itemized wish list, as long as there are a majority of you, three at least today, say, this is what we want to see, then we can recommend that out on top of, yes, they were totally fine with everything Ford Pinellas did, but they also wish for you commissioned to consider adding a policy objective in transportation on this, in infrastructure on that, in flood mitigation on this. So if there's any other wishlist items, since it seems to me that you got through everything Ford Pinellas has presented or anticipated discussing today, if you have wishlist items, now is as good a time as any to say, here are the other things I wanted to make sure we addressed and see if you can, to quote Hamilton, get the votes.
Point of clarification, today was not an advertised public hearing, correct? Do we not need to have an L P A public hearing? Oh, it was as a public hearing? Because we don't have the ordinance in the packet.
Well, there's, I think you're using public hearing in a very specific way as, here's the ordinance. But it was noticed that the public meeting was happening.
Okay.
The public is welcome to attend as we have a member of the public present. So notice, the location is open to the public, minutes are being taken. And there's an opportunity for public participation so that all of those, all the elements of a public meeting have occurred. Whether it's a hearing on an ordinance is something different.
I would motion that we develop language from this, this table and this board that, that specifically speaks to some means of controlling traffic that flows down from Clearwater and, and impedes on our environment here. And that we somehow find a way or explore ways to gain economic benefit, if nothing else. We want to control it, reduce it, and if we can find it, for example, just like Santa Bell Island, you don't get on and off that without going through a toll. Now, that may bring up all sorts of bad mojo, but is there a way for us to somehow? Now, that may bring up all sorts of bad mojo, but is there a way for us to somehow mitigate this traffic jam? Everybody here knows you can sit up on this, this bridge here for an hour trying to get back home.
Yeah.
Or get out.
No, it's not just coming south.
Or you've got people speeding through the community.
It's people going to.
That's right. And we need to do something about it. If we don't do it now, 10 years, 15, 20 years from now, it's going to be a half, one and a half.
Totally. Hard to formulate that into a motion. You got that already?
No, I'd like for some help on doing this, both Kyle and you. You see the issue as we've explained it. The impact of Clearwater Beach and the traffic going to and from that beach, it can't be handled on their, within their own infrastructure, is now coming through us and using our bridge to get back or get to Clearwater Beach. Way beyond what this road was designed for and what our intended use of this road is for. We can't even get out of our own side streets on the Gulf Boulevard without significant weights and impairment to air travel.
It's a safety issue as well, even within the communities.
Wait, wait, that's under discussion.
Right.
We're getting out of line here. We've got a motion.
Right. But we want to do this.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, no, we got a motion, we need a second.
Motion is?
Forget it.
That we, we explore a means of controlling the traffic coming southbound from Clearwater, coming westbound across Bel Air Causeway, that we look at ways that county could help us control this traffic flow-
Right.
-so that our road capacity is not exceeded-
Right.
-and that we can, if possible, impose some economic-
Relief.
Gain, penalty, whatever you want to call it. Make it too damn expensive to come traveling down this way and coming in and coming out.
From the revenue generated to Clearwater Beach by that traffic.
They pay us for the privilege of it or something. I don't have-
Yeah, that's-
Okay, what I would recommend is-
Wait a minute, we got a motion on the board.
Oh, I apologize.
So we need a second, then we can have discussion.
That's right.
I second.
All right, now discussion, but you're not on the board. But you have permission.
Thank you. What I would suggest is, under the transportation element, to add a new objective and policy, since this is a new topic area that doesn't really fit into what's there, so a new objective and a new policy to talk about what you've said.
Okay. Are you going to help us with that wording?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to come up with the wording right now? Verbatim, or do you just want to tell me generally?
Get work on it.
Okay.
You have a sense of what we're looking for?
Yes.
We can take all the wishlist items and form policies, and then bring them back to another meeting for approval.
Okay, well, Kyle, I know you should contribute, I don't know that you need to contribute to that, unless you're willing to, but I have to.
I have to.
Do what you do.
All those in there?
All right.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Those opposed?
Motion carried. You make the notes of all this.
So I'm unclear on whether we're having another meeting of the planning board after this, or whether we're taking care of it today.
I can work with you where you don't have to come back to the next meeting.
Oh, I'm happy to, I'm happy to come back, it's just-
We would come back and we'd like to set it on schedule.
Yeah, I'm absolutely happy to do that, that was my expectation that we were going to do that. Randy seems to indicate he wants to see it taken care of today, but-
What's the advanced timing that was required for our next meeting?
10 days.
10 days? So our next meeting cannot be before 10 days from now?
Right.
So let's set it for 11 days or whatever, what is 11 days from now?
It has to be, we can do it, you know, first, third, first, first, and so on.
I'm going to need my phone.
What's the date? What's the date?
Today is Wednesday.
The first is Wednesday.
Now, is it 10, is it working?
That's not it.
Just 10 days then.
Calendar days.
Calendar, yeah.
Four o'clock, that's fine.
And how do you notice the meeting? Do you put it in the paper, or?
Yeah, it could be anywhere from the 30th.
No, we put it on the website.
Monday, the 30th.
And the-
Tuesday, the 30th.
Meeting center.
Next, be the first.
We'll shoot for Wednesday, the first.
1:00?
Okay.
4:00? For our next meeting. Before I do anything else, I want to, well, your two minutes. Before your comments.
I sat in that seat in 2008, I did a comprehensive plan for the city, I want to emphasize the importance of it. Couple of things came up earlier, you were talking about Marina. My comment wasn't specifically to give guidance on Marina, it was to emphasize that there is language in the comprehensive plan that does get direct. Let's take an example, if you go through it. If a motel goes down in a Hurricane Leon, let's name it that, it strictly states that hotels will not go back up. So you do have that right to go further on what's the vision. And the importance of that is, if I look back on 14 years of doing a comprehensive plan for the city, do we really live and breathe this? What a beautiful comment by our attorney to say, "This is our constitution." I never looked at it that way, and I don't think we as a city do. And I could go through example after example after example of things that could have been avoided in this city, if we literally looked at the comprehensive plan a little more seriously, and as our constitution. So take the time, let people voice things out. I think it's, I could, I could go on, I think there's some language. If you look strategically at that Marina, half of the decisions we haggle about every two years could be avoided if we really had a vision for what does that look like? Is it always going to be that way? Or for that matter, depth of water, manatees. Look at the things that have happened in 14 years on intergovernmental. It's outlined in here how we should treat our relationships locally, yet we've run astray. This is an important moment, take it seriously. Underground wires. I find that interesting, I look back in time, what if it was a part of our comprehensive plan 25 years ago, that we as a city should implement underground wiring? Today, we've set precedent that the residents are going to pay for it. Wow, is that poor big city planning. So the comprehensive document is real, I love the idea that it's our constitution, I think we should look at it more often than just a seven-year process. And I know you do as a city manager and have responsibilities. And I'll just close out with Rudy's question. It's valid, I think it could have went further if the conversation just is allowed to happen versus not. So try not to just stick to the timeline of the comprehensive plan, take it seriously, and thanks for all your volunteering, it matters, it really does.
Great.
Appreciate it.
Now we can move on then, is there any unfinished business?
Today, though, we need to set an agenda for Wednesday's meeting, the first?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Do we need to set an agenda, request an agenda for Wednesday, February 1 meeting?
We can just continue with the review of the comprehensive plan, unless you want to be more specific, but you don't need to be-
Yeah, and specifically address transportation and intergovernmental, transportation and financial impact, transportation and financial impact of traffic to, to and from Clearwater Beach.
Well, are you doing that as part of the comprehensive plan review?
Right.
So you don't need to signal precisely in your agenda which elements, if you're just doing a complete, a continuing comprehensive plan review, better for you to say, "We're doing, the whole thing's on the table, then we're only going to look at item A of-"
I presume that's when we come back and go through other points in here.
Continuation of the agenda.
And making up our suggestion list based on anything that we as a group wouldn't see added-
Yes.
-or suggested to council in their final.
And with the requisite legal admonition that you all reflect individually, and come back with your own individual insights or collective discussion.
Right.
Should we send that to Patty? If we have a list, do we send it to Patty before the meeting, or just coming in with the list?
No, we're on, he's saying, we'll be as mundane as we can as an item, and then we bring in our-
So come here with the list?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
That's probably, that may be best.
Except to send Linda ammunition for her, what we've asked her to bring through us, we need to evenate her points in this issue of transportation and financial impact, right?
I think I got the gist. I was a little unclear at first, but I think with the further discussion, I think I have what I need.
Okay, we want to put steel barriers up there.
So I will take all the comments that you made here today, and the things that we said we'd revise, and I'll create a new draft and send it to you all ahead of that meeting.
Yeah. Can we put a poll group up?
I defer to legal counsel.
I put you before unfinished business, so.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
On the next agenda, can we add a review of ordinance that we've discovered, some error?
Staff is asking, requesting that in addition to the matter that you have, staff has a matter that wishes to bring to you about, so in one, in one part of the meeting, you'd be the land planning agency, hats, hat wearing, take that, once you get through all your land planning agency stuff, go back to being the planning and zoning board who's charged with providing any insight, well, any insight on proposed revisions to the land development code. In looking at the zoning and land development code in the last few months administering it, the city staff has discovered a typo that it can address, but also the way that a particular chart is laid out in terms of permissible setbacks in the zoning district, that it's not drafted in, it may not be drafted, ultimately it's for you folks to decide, may not be drafted in the clearest way possible for administrative purposes, and it's going to come forward to you with some suggested land development code revisions for you to do as the planning and zoning board. And so he's asking, are you open to discussing that in February as well, as it's a priority for staff?
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Bring it.
Are we still doing-
Bring it, but I would like some kind of a description early.
Yeah, you'll have materials in advance at the meeting.
Okay, is there any other unfinished business?
So I think we're concerned about-
What about the time? Are we going to stick with one?
February 1st, 1:00.
At one?
Yeah. And I'm sorry, we're loosey-goosey, but that's how we get things done.
It's a process. It doesn't scare anything out of me, I just want to make sure you get, you get things accomplished.
Yeah.
Now, there is, there's an item on your agenda, this is a brand-new year, and we have a form present, and there should be nominations for office holder of the board. So I'll entertain and I'll-
Okay, I move TC and Phil to reelect the chair of the board.
Second. There's been a motion made and set in it, is there any other nominations? Is there any other nominations? Is there any other nominations? I declare the nomination's closed. You want me to come in? I'll try it again. Now I will entertain vice chairman.
All in favor of, it's been nominated, there's no other, all in favor?
I understand, I was parliamentarian for the state of Ohio.
Understood, sir.
Yes.
Not any Rudy requests.
Are there other nominations?
Wait, I thought about that, and I appreciate it, but it's my intent, it was this comprehensive plan, it's done, to resign from the board. I've got family, personal issues that are increasingly taking more of my time, I also need to reduce my stress level for health reasons, and so I can accept the nomination to chair. It would only be unique to go somewhere else than that, unfortunately, sorry.
I'll adjourn there.
So it's up to the board at this point, I don't think I should be involved in this issue.
Call for nominations for vice chair.
Who wants to be vice chair?
Not me.
I'll submit, Mr. Hart.
What all's involved?
Huh?
It's too easy to go, yes, what all do you do as a vice chair? What are the obligations?
Watch your real feeling, too.
If he decides he needs to play golf on the day that we need to report to city council, you have to do it.
That's about it. I don't prepare reports or any of that kind of stuff.
Well, now, if he signs you something, so-
But I can, I can gracefully turn that request down.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Is there any other nominations for vice chair? Any other nominations for vice chair? I declare nominations closed, and you're automatically vice chair.
You make the vote.
Well, let us second the motion.
He seconded, there's no other nominations, I've called it three times. It's a declaration from the chair. Nominations for secretary?
Why don't we just, because I don't think, I think that concerns him, so we'll vote. Go ahead.
It's your, it's your body, I mean, it's, it's an unopposed nomination, parliament, from a parliamentary standpoint, either procedure is fine.
Oh, okay, but he's not going to respond.
So.
He will be here every time.
So you have a chair and a vice chair, you're, you're good to go in terms of your, your seat.
All those in favor, opposed, nomination's closed. I declare the meeting closed until the first.
Two options.
We're adjourned at 3:06.
Are we adjourned?
I want to personally thank Mr. Linda for explaining all this stuff to us.
Oh, yes.
Again, you did a hell of a job.
Well, thank you for having me.
And our attorney, our city manager, and Pat for showing up and keeping us all in line. And our citizens. And I mean that. You care.
I love you, man.
And close.